Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's Thursday, November 13th. This is a meeting of the Council Rock School District Board of School Directors. It's terrific to see so many people here. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. And we will call to order, please. Dr. Sanco, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Madison Miller, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please remain standing with the National Anthem. Tonight, we are pleased to have representatives from Newtown Middle School, Holland Middle School, Council Rock South, and Council Rock North. It is our pleasure to honor our veterans with the playing of the Battle Hymn of the Republic. And thank you to the Council Rock Brass Ensemble. Thank you, gentlemen. Dr. Sanco, would you get us started, please? Madam Secretary, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Tate?
Present.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Here.
Mr. Hickey?
Here.
Mr. Roosevelt?
Here.
Ms. Polly?
Present.
Ms. Osaki?
Present.
Ms. Khan?
Here.
Ms. Stone?
Here.
Ms. Horner?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sanco, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Welcome and good evening to the Board of School Directors, to the staff and community members joining us here tonight, and to those tuning in on the Council Rock YouTube channel. Thank you to the Council Rock Combined Brass Ensemble led by Mr. Scott Slutter and Mr. Keith Roodat for their performance, and to the Student Advisory Board, who will be reporting for us this evening regarding Council Rock South activities. With November, we formally enter the season of gratitude, notably Veterans Day, which was observed this past Tuesday, November 11th. To all veterans in our community and beyond, thank you for your service and sacrifice, and know that we appreciate your service to our country. It's also time when we pause to focus squarely on student growth through parent-teacher conferences, which are important for the following reasons. These conversations are not just simply updates or report-outs, they're dedicated conversations between parents and educators about the whole child academically, socially, and emotionally. We set aside nearly three full days each year for this purpose because these conversations matter. Conferences give parents a window into the school day, a chance to hear directly from the teacher, and an opportunity to share insights only a parent can provide. These meetings strengthen the connection between home and school and set the tone for the rest of the school year. We'd like to strongly encourage every parent to treat their scheduled conference time as essential. Your presence, your engagement, it sends a powerful message to your child that their learning, their development, and success are a priority to the adults who guide them. Each year, the National Merit Scholarship Organization recognizes talented students across the nation. These students demonstrate exemplary academic achievement and the highest level of scholarship. Tonight, we are fortunate to celebrate the achievement of 13 National Merit Scholars from Council Rock High School South. At this time, I would like to ask Council Rock South Principal, Mr. Anthony Venziel, to come to the podium and for Mr. Tate to join me as we recognize these special 13 student scholars and their extraordinary accomplishments. Mr. Venziel?
It is my great pleasure this evening to recognize a group of students whose exceptional academic achievements have earned them national distinction. Each year, approximately 1.5 million students enter the National Merit Scholarship Program, a prestigious academic competition administered by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Eligibility is determined through performance on the PSAT NMSQT qualifying exam. The students we are recognizing tonight have demonstrated outstanding excellence, ranking among the top scorers nationwide. First, we honor our commended scholars. These students are among the 50,000 highest scorers in the nation, representing roughly the top 3% of all test takers. Their performance reflects not only their commitment to learning and personal growth that enriches our entire school community. I am proud to present to you, in alphabetical order, Council Rock High School South's National Merit commended students. Next, we recognize our National Merit semifinalists. These students represent the top 16,000 scorers nationwide, placing them within the top 1% of all students who took this exam. This remarkable accomplishment is a testament to their dedication, their perseverance, and their intellectual curiosity. I am honored to present, also in alphabetical order, Council Rock High School South's National Merit semifinalists. Sophie Kornev. Samar Sariah. Congratulations to all of our National Merit School recipients on this extraordinary achievement.
At the October Board Meeting, the district approved a partnership with Smart Social, an online platform designed to help parents, educators, and students navigate social media safely and responsibly. Through this partnership, every Council Rock parent now has a VIP, Very Informed Parent Membership. This gives families full access to Smart Social's resources. On Wednesday, November 19th, Council Rock will participate in a live webinar titled, "Snapchat and Instagram Risks: The Hidden Dangers of Disappearing Messages and Secret Accounts." All Council Rock parents, guardians, and educators are welcome to participate. This event is designed to educate parents and families about the risks posed by two apps likely to be on your child's phone, Instagram and Snapchat. The Smart Social catalog contains more than 450 resources that educate parents on social media, apps, trends, challenges, video games, and other screen-related activities that can sometimes put young people at risk. This is an investment in our families, and I encourage every parent to register that is a Council Rock family. Since we launched the program on Monday, we have 333 Council Rock families signed up already, and I'm confident there will be more. Find the link to register your Smart Social account and for Council Rock families on the district website, in the upcoming Rock Report, and in your school's newsletter. Council Rock continues its support of the American Red Cross as this year's district charity. To date, we have exceeded our donation targets with a total so far of 188 units of blood donated. Since each pint saves three lives, Council Rock's donations could potentially save 564 lives. If you can donate, please visit the Red Cross website at www.redcrossblood.com. Information on upcoming drives can also be found in the weekly Rock Report. As I previously mentioned, the Veterans Day holiday was observed earlier this week, recognizing the service and dedication of the military veterans in our community and across the United States. Many of our students participated in activities that expressed gratitude to our local veterans, including Veterans Day traditions at our elementary, middle, and high schools. Tonight, we're going to share an act of appreciation for two veterans who are also Council Rock graduates, both Purple Heart recipients who gave their lives in duty to our country. Both Master Sergeant Kenneth Elwell, Council Rock class of 1997, and Private First Class Robert H. Dombowski, Council Rock class of 2005, lost their lives in battle. Though they died protecting their country, their legacy lives on in Council Rock. And at this time, I'd like to invite some members of our community, Mr. Eric Saracino, a United States Air Force veteran himself, and Mr. James Gallagher, also a U.S. Air Force veteran, to the podium to share more about this special remembrance project. Gentlemen, Anthony, would you mind open the door for the gentleman? They're going to come in that door. Good evening. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. What Jim's holding up right now, so today, we're here to discuss and talk about two remarkable American heroes from our area, Master Sergeant Kenneth "Kenny" Elwell and Private First Class Robert "Bobby" Dombowski, whose courage, sacrifice, and devotion to our nation will never be forgotten. The reason we're here today is about three or four years ago, I went to a holiday party, and I've been involved with the Northampton Township Veterans Group for a couple of years then. Kenny Elwell's sister, I was introduced by Bernadette Heenan back there, who was very instrumental in this as well, introduced me to Sue Elwell. I got to talking to her for a little bit, getting to understand the whole situation and, you know, how much her brother and her family meant to her. As I was leaving that holiday party, she approached me, and she handed me two small boxes, or two regular-sized boxes. And she said to me, "The first one contains the Pennsylvania state flag, and the other is the United States flag that was presented in demonstration at Kenny's funeral at Arlington Cemetery." With tears in her eyes, she says, "Please take good care of these flags and make sure my brother is properly remembered." She added, "I know you will do my brother proud." So, a lot of pressure on me. For three years, Jim, well, Bernadette and I have been trying to figure out a way, how do we, how do you honor, how do you honor two, you know, an individual like Master Sergeant Kenny Elwell? Let's see, not only did we want to interview, I mean, wanted to recognize Kenny, but we also wanted to remember Bobby as well. So, today, we're here to display is that we're here to remember both Kenny and Bobby. These two young men also attended schools in the Council Rock School District, grade schools and high school. They grew up in our neighborhoods, they walked the same halls as our own children, and they're a part of our community. They died serving this country, but more importantly, they're our boys. Their courage, sacrifice, and love for others will never be forgotten. Bernadette and Jim Gallagher here next to me are huge and instrumental in working together as a team to figure out what is going to be the best place for these. Today, we are proud to say that we have found a home for these flags. This military shadow box will be dedicated in the lobby area of the Council Rock STAR Center in Richborough. The display will stand as a permanent tribute to both Kenny and Bobby. It represents not only the remembrance, but also gratitude, unity, and a continuation of their legacy through future generations. With the help of the special needs students enrolled at the STAR Center, we are going to hold a formal dedication ceremony sometime in January so that everybody can be a part of it. This shadow box is going to remind all who sees it year after year that freedom is never free, and it's safeguarded by men and women like Kenny Elwell, Bobby Dombowski, who love their country enough to give everything for it. So, thank you, and may we always honor their memory. Thank you, Eric and James, and on a personal note, Eric, I mentioned this to Eric when we spoke, on a personal note, Kenny was a fourth-grade student of mine many, many years ago. So, thank you for making the legacy, helping the legacy of these two fine young men continue. Some important dates to remember. Thursday, November 20th, there will be an Education Committee meeting, 7:00 PM at the Chancellor's Center. Monday, November 24th, will be an early dismissal for students in grades K through eight, and there will be parent-teacher conferences. Tuesday, November 25th, early dismissal, grades K to eight, parent-teacher conferences. Wednesday, November 26th, schools are closed for parent and teacher conferences. On Thursday and Friday, November 27 and 28, schools and offices will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. And just for those folks looking ahead to December for the winter break schedule, Wednesday and Thursday, December 24th and 25th, schools and offices will be closed. Friday, December 26th, Monday, December 29th, Tuesday, December 30th, schools will be closed, offices will be open. Wednesday, December 31st, and Thursday, January 1st, schools and offices will be closed. And Friday, January 2nd, schools will be closed and offices will be open. Tonight marks the final board meeting for two long-serving members, Mr. Bob Hickey and Mrs. Joda Polly. Board service is demanding work requiring significant personal time and a deep commitment to public responsibility. Both Mrs. Polly and Mr. Hickey have embodied those qualities. Their steady leadership, thoughtful decision-making, and unwavering support of our students, our schools, and our community reflect the highest standards of public service. Through their years on the board, they consistently demonstrated what it means to keep students first always. Their efforts have strengthened our district and made a meaningful lasting difference for students we serve. On a personal note, I'm grateful for the professionalism, partnership, and integrity they brought to their work. I have seen firsthand how deeply they care about Council Rock and how fully their actions align with their words. Their service has mattered to our staff, to our families, and most importantly, to our students. On behalf of the entire Council Rock community, thank you, Mrs. Polly, and thank you, Mr. Hickey, for your years of service and for the positive impact you have made on both current and future generations of Council Rock students. Your leadership will be remembered, and your contributions are truly appreciated. And each of you should have, or should have, found a little memento at your seat when you got to your seat this evening. Finally, this is a reminder to our community to use only the Council Rock School District resources, websites, and official social media platforms for the most reliable, up-to-date, and accurate information about our district. We urge the public to verify information on social media and be discerning in where they obtain information relating to Council Rock. If you question what you're seeing, need clarification, or want a reliable fact check, please contact the district directly. Our contact information is available on our website at www.crsd.org. Mr. Tate and Board, this concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sanco. I got us started off on the wrong foot by skipping over roll call, and then we went ahead and skipped over the CR South Student Advisory Board. But I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you got to appreciate the superintendent's report. So, Mr. Venziel, if you would.
Thank you again. Good evening, members of the Board of School Directors, Dr. Sanco, fellow district-level administrators, and to the CRSD community. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you all the wonderful things
And each of you should have, or should have found a little momento at your seat when you got to your seat this evening. Finally, this is a reminder to our community to use only the Council Rock School District resources, websites, and official social media platforms for the most reliable, up-to-date, and accurate information about our district. We urge the public to verify information on social media and be discerning in where they obtain information relating to Council Rock. If you question what you're seeing, need clarification, or want a reliable fact check, please contact the district directly. Our contact information is available on our website at www.crsd.org. Mr. Tate and Board, this concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sanco. I got us started off on the wrong foot by skipping over roll call, and then we went ahead and skipped over the CR South Student Advisory Board. But I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you got to appreciate the superintendent's report. So, Mr. Benzial, if you would.
Thank you again. Good evening, members of the Board of School Directors, Dr. Sanco, fellow district-level administrators, and to the CRSD community. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you all the wonderful things that are happening at Council Rock High School South. It is my pleasure to introduce to you our Student Advisory Board members for the 25-26 school year. Class of 2026 Representative Senior Artur Kiss, Class of 2027 Representative Junior Daniel Thomas, Class of 2028 Representative Sophomore Mia LaFredo, Class of 2029 Representative Freshman Ellie Chow, and Class of 2027 Representative Junior Olivia Mitsis, who also attends MBIT. At this time, I would like to ask Senior Artur Kiss to begin with his report.
Good evening, School Board members. My name is Artur Kiss, and I am the 12th Grade Representative for the Student Advisory Board. Last month, our school held our annual Blue, White, and Gold Night, where teams from each grade level competed in a variety of activities in the name of school spirit. Congratulations to our senior class, who won the Blue, White, and Gold Night by a thrilling score of 30 over 29 over the juniors. Way to finish strong and take home the win in the final event. Additionally, in September, we had our annual Homecoming Dance on Saturday, September 27th, from 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM. The dance was a huge success, with a large turnout rate, with attendees having a lot of fun throughout the evening, helping us start off the school year on a positive note and getting back into the Golden Hawk spirit of things. Now, obviously, we can't talk about the senior class without talking about the senior trip. As per tradition, the senior class will be having their Disney trip to Florida from April 7th to April 11th, 2026, with half the trip taking place at Disney World Parks and the other half at Universal Florida, including Epic Universe, with over 300 students committed to attending the trip this year. As for deadlines, the second payment deadline is coming up this Friday, November 14th, 2025, of $715. For those attending, roommate submissions are also due on this deadline, and keep in mind, no refund without travel insurance after this date will be given. The third and final payment is due on Wednesday, January 7th, 2026, with payment amount depending on the number of roommates present. For those attending, please see the senior trip canvas page for more information. That is it for me from today. May all have a wonderful evening, and we'll be back soon with another round of updates and events.
Good evening, School Board. I'm Daniel Thomas, the Junior Representative for SAB, and I would like to inform you about some recent events from this current school year. Starting off, I would like to talk about our athletics over at South. Firstly, our Women's Varsity Volleyball Team had an amazing season. Overall, their record was 17 to 5 and lost in the quarterfinal of the District One Playoff. For the Men's Varsity Football Team, they had a season record of nine wins and one loss, winning multiple important games such as the Blue Out and Gold Out, but had unfortunately lost in the quarterfinals in the PIAA Championship this last Friday to Haverford. Next, our Girls Soccer Team had a good season with 10 wins and eight losses and two ties. In the first round of playoffs, they took the game to double overtime versus Springfield and eventually won in a shootout. Then in the next round, they also brought it to overtime, but ultimately lost in a shootout against Penridge. In Men's Cross Country, Jude Olson and Nate Cash, both were state qualifiers this year, with Jude Olson being a medalist as well. The team came in third in the SOL Championship and became team champions in both the Cherokee Invitational and Sauttertown Twilight Invitational. For Cross Country Girls, they had a record of four wins and one loss and became suburban one league champions for the seventh year in a row. Our Field Hockey Team had a total season record of seven wins and 12 losses, while also becoming a state qualifier. Our Men's Soccer Team was also successful, having a total record of 10 wins, five losses, and four ties, and also becoming a district champion qualifier. For our Women's Tennis Team, their total record was a staggering 11 wins and zero losses. They were also SOL Champions and a PIAA State Semi-finalist. Now, during our recent Fall Fest on October 18th, our Student Council Representative for the Class of 2027 had a loaded Apple station. It turned out to be very successful for raising money for the junior class. Finally, we recognized Veterans Day two days ago at South. This year, RoKappa introduced a new initiative for Veterans Day. They introduced Alpha Bravo K9, a nonprofit organization that trains and raises dogs for veterans with PTSD. Representatives from the organization were on hand to speak about their valuable service. Mr. Jacoby and RoKappa members decorated and welcomed the veterans to school with a clap. Thank you all for listening and have a good rest of your night.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mia LaFredo, and I'm the sophomore class SAB representative. The Class of 2028 has been busy this school year, raising funds and promoting school spirit. Working with our new principal, Mr. V, Student Council implemented a new idea called Common Homeroom to help promote more school involvement and raise school spirit. Every marking period for one week, we have an extended homeroom, where each class's student government presents to their grade about past and future events. In addition, each class does an activity to increase class participation. For the sophomore class, we had minutes-to-win games, which were very successful. In addition to promoting school spirit, the Class of 2028 has completed two fundraisers. One at our annual Fall Fest, where we sold loaded hot chocolate and fried Oreos, and the second was a Halloween bake sale at lunch with brownies, cake pops, cookies, and Rice Krispies. As a whole school, we had an Activities Fair on September 26th to promote school clubs and activities. We had over 50 clubs participate and a lot of great activities. One of our many clubs was our Red Cross Club, which just had a fall blood drive. Thanks to the club's generous donors, the blood drive provided life-saving blood to patients in need. Upcoming events for the Class of 2028 include decorating Dr. Murphy's Door for our Door Decorating Contest, our annual Candy Cane Hot Chocolate Sale, December 19th through the 23rd, and a Valentine's Day Bake Sale, February 10th through the 12th. Thank you very much for your attention and have a wonderful evening.
I'm Ellie Chow, the ninth-grade representative. This fall has been an exciting and productive season for the Class of 2029. During the Fall Fest, the ninth-grade Student Council ran a stand to raise money for the Class of 2029's future senior trip to Disney. The Hawks Marching Band was successful at their band competition in Abington on October 25th, where they won with a score of 85.7. At this competition, they won Best Overall Effect and Best Visual. At their November 1st competition in Upper Moreland, they got third in their division with a score of 88.9. Our school's fall musical is the Phantom of the Opera, with tonight as the opening night and additional shows on November 14th and 15th. The Council Rock South Vocal Ensemble will be entering the B101 Competition this year in hopes to make it to the semifinals, which will take place on December 5th. There will be a winter concert that will take place on December 18th. This coming March, the Council Rock South Choir Program will be performing a farewell concert, followed by a trip to Germany and Austria. Thank you for your time, and I am very honored to be part of SAB for the next four years.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Olivia Mitsis, and I'm a student in the Dental Occupations Program at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology, as well as a member of the Class of 2027. I'm excited to share some of the great things that are happening at MBIT. This past month, Middle Bucks Institute of Technology has been named a winner and finalist in the Bucks County Herald's 2025 Best of the Region Contest. The winners are the Trade Vocational School, the After-School Program, and the Cosmetology Program. The finalists are the Nursing Program and the Preschool. Huge thank you to the community for supporting MBIT. In October, students from the Cosmetology Program hosted a fundraiser to support Empowering Cuts, a nonprofit that provides free haircuts to individuals experiencing homelessness. They raised $580 and collected shoes and hoodies to donate. MBIT is also getting ready for its annual open house on Thursday, November 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. This event is a chance for students and families to explore MBIT's 21 career and technical programs, meet instructors, and see what MBIT is really about. Lastly, MBIT students are representing our school across the state, from the Skills USA Fall Leadership Conference at Kalahari to HOSA's Leadership Training in Hershey. Also, our automotive and collision repair students are running a Drive Away the Cold fundraiser to provide winter coats for kids in need. It's been great to see how students at MBIT are using their skills to help others and make a positive impact. Specifically at South, at the end of October, an MBIT representative spoke with our ninth-grade students about the programs. Applications for the next school year will be available soon. Thank you all for listening, for all the great things happening at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology.
Thank you all very much for your reports. Thank you.
Very nicely done. Thank you very much. And how many days until senior trip, did I hear? April 7th. Very good. Moving on the agenda, we have the Solicitor's Report. If you would, Mr. Amusel, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing public to report. The Board has our written report we submitted, and the Board did meet in executive session tonight before the meeting for a personnel matter.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Moving on to public comment, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board. When speaking to the Board, we ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience or watching this broadcast live on CRTV YouTube. Your ideas are welcome and will be considered in deliberating an issue. The Board is likely not to respond to your comments or questions in real time. And we have, this first segment of public comment is dedicated to agenda items. We have one person signed up, Cheryl Kearns Hills. And if there's anyone else who wishes to comment now about an agenda item, you may do so after Ms. Hills. Thank you.
I thank you. Good evening. And I'm assuming Chancellor Center is an agenda item. I want to just make sure that I'm in the right place at the right time. Appreciate it. Cheryl Kearns Hills, lifelong resident of Newtown Borough. Many thanks again to the Board, Administration, and community for all the work that they do and the work that they've done in discussing this building. The time is right to move on this Chancellor Center renovations. It's been over 20 years since anything was done. You know the importance of purpose and sharing your skills as a Board to create and foster lasting change to allow this building to continue to stand. Some of my comments tonight have been inspired by Bill Schur's The Cathedral Within. The Board's collective effort and shared vision is needed now, more than ever, for required lasting impact. Option Three is the best solution, and it will last this building to serve Administration to its best for the next 20 years or more. Let's not have additional repairs needed in five years, as this is a waste of money in the long run, as costs will rise and cause significant disruptions to the workforce that resides here. You will also be seeing me again quickly in five years. Option Three is also the Administration's selection, and these individuals know what is best for a productive and efficient workplace, to lead CR students first. You owe it to the Council Rock community to give back. Let us believe in the power of community by your decision to create transformative changes at this center. You have the power to make the right decision this evening to uphold Council Rock's history and the beauty of this historic building that can continue to serve this community well into the future, well beyond my lifetime. The time is now. Option Three does it all for all of us. Thank you again for your time and all of your efforts. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Hills. Good evening, and you'll introduce yourself, please, and tell us where you live? Just the town or borough?
Good evening. Terry Kylie, Newtown Borough resident. I want to thank the Board for all the time it has spent on this very serious decision. I've been at all these meetings for more than a year. You've considered so many different options. You've gave a lot of time and effort to this decision. I truly appreciate this, especially because I've got a chance to sit at these meetings and see how much time you put in. And again, I'm going to second Mrs. Hill's recommendation that we go with Option Three. I was here 20 years ago with my son, Chris, who was born at that time, and advocated for this building to be used by the Administration. I really want to see you go with Option Three, so that I too don't need to return again to many of those meetings. But again, I want to thank you all. I know this is volunteering your time and giving up many evenings and many days. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. Diana Billick from Newtown Township. Greetings to the School Board and the community. Our Board members have listened carefully, reviewed detailed reports, conducted site visits to this historic building, and absorbed countless hours of comments and research. All of this has been done with one purpose, to determine the future of Chancellor Center. The time has come to make this decision. After weighing all the information, there is only one clear path forward. Throughout your meetings, it has become evident that the most efficient and cost-effective choice is to authorize Option Three with full repairs and renovations. By taking this step, we ensure that the Chancellor Street Center will continue to serve our school district with pride and purpose for many years to come. As an aside to this, my daughter was the last class that went through this school in kindergarten. And 20, over 20 years ago, I did this fight already, when the building was going to be just totally closed. This building has become, besides the gem of the district, it is an appropriate choice to authorize these renovations and repairs. Please go with Option Three. Make your family and community happy, and we would like you to consider that as the biggest option. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One more, at least one more.
My name is Joe Pizzo. I've been a resident from Newtown Township for 23 years. I don't know the numbers of each option, but I advocate a pay-as-you-go approach. I assume the cost of this will be passed on to the taxpayers, but my taxes have gone up, I think, 40% in the past few years, and we have $140 million budget in the school district. I just don't think we have to go full bore. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else who wishes to comment on an agenda item? We also have public comment at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. So I think we're done for now with public comment. Thank you very much. Moving on to approval of minutes of the meeting of the Board on October 23. Ms. Polly, if you would, please.
Sure. I move to approve the minutes of the meeting of the School Board Directors held on October 23rd, 2025.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please record. This motion is passing unanimously. And Education Committee, Ms. Polly, please.
Yes, thank you. The last Education Committee meeting was on October 30th. It was a long, very productive meeting. We discussed different educational initiatives, and I'm going to try to summarize them quickly. So, the Structured Literacy Plan is completed and has been added to the district website. The Structured Literacy Professional Learning Plan is underway. There is the Lexius Letters Leadership Development Course for our 25 administrators. And again, LETTERS stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And again, Letters stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. There is also the leadership, there's also Lexus Letters for teachers in grades K-1, 2, 3, Special Ed and Literacy Specialists. That's a total of 216 teachers. The purpose is to build teachers' knowledge and skills in effective instruction of reading and spelling. It is a two-year program, and I think it's eight in-service days. Then there is Lexus Aspire Training. This is for higher grades, where there is the shift between learning to read to reading to learn. This is for 226 total participants, and it's again a two-year program. I understand it's eight to 10 online courses. Finally, there is a SASPD course for other teachers who are not in ELA-related roles. And it will be the same training for Special Ed and for regular teachers, basically learning how the kids learn to read. Another topic, we talked about the multi-tier system of support, the MTSS, for 25, 26. The new elementary school schedules provide for 30-minute win time, which is intervention, and it is rolling out this month with flexible groupings. My understanding is that it started before COVID and then it stopped, and now it's starting again. The district assessment calendar is posted on our website, and there is also information about that on the Rock Report. As you will see, the district provides a lot of assessment opportunities, and there's always discussion about whether we provide too many or it's enough. And I know we'll discuss this at the next Educational Committee meeting. Then there is a comprehensive plan. Different stakeholder groups work on the district's comprehensive plan, and it was going to come to the Board for approval at the March Board meeting. On special education, we talked about the special education cyclical monitoring, and this happens every six years, because the Department of Education, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, reviews every district's special ed program for compliance and continuous improvement. Council Rock's last cyclical monitoring took place in the spring of 2020. This cyclical monitoring will start in December, and we will know the results by June 2026. Happy to also report that Council Rock had its first special education parent advisory council on October 8th. The objective going forward is to shift the current model of district-driven meeting to a parent-led and district-supported meeting, so fostering shared ownership. I think we're ahead already, but I'm sure my MBIT reps on the Board will talk about the open house for November 20th. So our next committee meeting is next Thursday, November 20th, and that concludes my report. And should I make the motion for the?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Polly.
Okay, I move to approve consent agenda items B through E, as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Comments, questions? Any concerns, objections? None? This passes unanimously. Thank you. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit 22 report, please, Ms. Osaki.
Sure. The IU actually hasn't met since we're meeting earlier for our Board meeting this month. The IU has not met since our last meeting, but we do meet this coming Tuesday, November 18th. I can share that I know that my fellow Board members at the IU and the Executive Director are very happy that we finally have a state budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for representing the district at the IU. MBIT. Mr. Hickey.
Good evening, everyone. The Executive Council met on November 3rd. A few different items that we discussed, and my apologies to Ms. Mitsis if I repeat some of that information. One of the big things that was done, the financial audit of MBIT for the 24, 25 school year is already complete. This early, and there were no issues to report, so that is good news. Also, in reference to the state budget, we are also glad that it has passed, because we had a discussion about possibly moving funds from our Capital Reserve Fund to our operating budget due to the impasse. Unlike Council Rock and some of these other places, we, MBIT, does not have a huge surplus or whatever term you would like to use. So there was major concerns about how we would pay for some of the things going forward. And fortunately, it appears that a budget has been passed, and things will get back to somewhat normal. As far as upgrades are concerned, the next major upgrade will be a walk-in refrigerator freezer for the Culinary Arts Program. It's been talked about for the last three years, but finally something is getting done with it, and construction is underway. Will hopefully be finished sometime in the spring. As mentioned, there's an open house on November 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It is open not just to parents and students, it's open to everyone, where you can see the many course offerings and tour this amazing building. It's up on York Road in Jamison. Speaking of which, applications are now being accepted for the 26, 27 school year. Ms. Mitsis did mention some of the winners in the Bucks County Hurdle, including Best Trade Vocational School, Best After-School Program, Best Adult Education Evening Courses, and also the Cosmetology School. In addition, one thing that she didn't mention is we had a student named Hallie Sigler who won the 2026 HOSA Pin Design Competition, and HOSA stands for the Health Occupations Students of America. Her original design features a heart that will electronically blink and a dangling clapper. It's hard to explain without a visual, so I would suggest that you go to their website at MBIT.org and look at it. It's really phenomenal. It was a phenomenal design, and like I said, just another one of the ways that MBIT keeps on putting themselves out there in the local and regional arena. Our next meeting, it's listed on the website as December 2nd, but it will be on December 8th. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey, and thank you for all the time that you put into representing Council Rock so well at MBIT. We appreciate it, and we appreciate your work as a Board member. And, Ms. Polly, we appreciate your work as a Board member as well. Thank you. Next is Council Rock Education Foundation. That is I. Two dates, please, to put on your calendar. Monte Carlo Night is February 28th. That is a fun event. Northampton Country Club again this year, and it raises money for innovative education programs in our school district. The other date to put on your calendar is, if you're interested in playing golf, at the beautiful Jericho National Golf Club. It's the Kref Golf Classic on June 25th. You could also volunteer to help with the event. It's a fun event at a beautiful location. So that's Council Rock Education Foundation. We'll move ahead to Policy Committee.
Okay. The Policy Committee met on November 3rd. We had a second read, several policies for second read. Policy 224, Care of School Property. Policy 226, Searches. Policy 227, Controlled Substances Paraphernalia. And we had the first read of three additional policies. Policy 204, Attendance. Policy 220, Student Expression and Dissemination of Materials. And Policy 223, The Use of Bicycles and Motor Vehicles. Two years ago, we decided to take a full inventory of all of our policies, and it's a major undertaking. We decided to start with, first, with the policies that affect students, which are the 200s. And I am thrilled to say that with the first reads tonight, we will have completed at least first reads of all the 200-level policies. So beginning in the new year, we will move on to policy 300-level policies, right, Ronnie? That those affect our teachers and staff, correct? And we'll go from there. But the 200s are really the meat of the policy manual. Obviously, they're the most important. They deal with our students. So we're really happy to be wrapping that section up. So thank you, Ronnie, for that. I know it was a lot of work. And with that, here we go here. I move to approve consent agenda items B through G, as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
We have a second? Any?
A second.
I said we have a second.
Oh.
Thank you. Very good. All right. Comments, questions? Are there any concerns? Mr. Roosevelt.
Sure, thank you. I struggle with some of these, as has been discussed ad nauseam. I think many of us also struggle with these. These are policies that are necessary, but thankfully have not been utilized in at least 35 years. I continue to struggle a little bit with policy 220, as I believe, as I've previously articulated, this is a slippery slope against First Amendment. And so I continue to be concerned about that regardless of where students and families and administrators and teachers fall. I believe Council Rock is filled with a wide diversity, thankfully, of a variety of different opinions. They all need to be heard, but we also need to maintain this as an educational facility free of disruptions. A couple of disruptions have been articulated in previous meetings, and that administration of that remains a concern, and I just want to make sure that all students maintain their First Amendment rights. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roosevelt. Other comments? Questions, concerns? Okay. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Madam Secretary.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Yes.
Mr. Roosevelt?
Yes.
Mr. Hickey?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Ms. Osaki?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Horner?
Yes.
That's nine yes and zero no's.
Thank you. Yes, please.
I just wanted to, for the public's justification, Mr. Roosevelt is 100% correct. A couple of these were very difficult policies, and we spent a great deal of time on them, particularly 226, which just passed for a second read. But I did want to point out, and Mr. Spring, please, I'm going to turn to you in a moment, but the policy 220, which Mr. Roosevelt referenced, the student expression and dissemination of materials, I just want to be clear for the public, while we did have some changes in that policy, none of the changes were substantial. They were like kind of moving words around, but the actual practices, none of that is changing, correct?
Correct. I'm sorry. The standards that are set forth, and Mr. Amusso, correct me if I'm wrong, with respect to expression and free speech, both in-school and out-of-school, I guess, school oversight of out-of-school expression, are really set forth, and the parameters are pretty strictly set forth by both state law as well as the U.S. Supreme Court, particularly out-of-school expression. I'm, sorry, I'm going to pronounce the name of this case wrong, but Mahoney, and is a 2021 case that really fleshed out the specific standard for oversight of out-of-school expression by the schools. And so the policy itself, from a substantive standpoint, is based on the law set forth throughout the country and the state Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
All right. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Facilities Committee. Ms. Horner, please.
Okay, thank you. Before we get into the Chancellor Center and everything on the agenda on that for voting, I'm just going to talk about that we met facilities back on Thursday, November 6th. We'll be voting first on the purchase of four trucks and one box truck for use in the district. There's a change order for HVAC at Churchville Elementary for Johnson Controls Failed Communication Card. There's a termination and an approval of a contract on an emergency generator and maintenance services. And there's asbestos abatement work at Cell House and Twining Ford. With that, I will move to approve consent agenda items G through L, as contained in the attached agenda.
Second. Comments, questions? Any concerns? Yes, Ms. Osaki.
Just quickly, I wanted to, for the public, and I know we talked about this in the Facilities meeting, but anytime we hear the word asbestos, we get nervous, but at no ti, the asbestos that is being remediated is nowhere near where any of our students are or were, and nobody's in any danger, and I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any objections to this motion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please record it as passing unanimously. The next motion, item B, I will make. I move to approve design and planning for option three, which is the full renovation of the building for the Chancellor Center renovation.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. All right. Comments, please? Questions? Mr. Roosevelt.
Sure. Why aren't we starting with option one, or why aren't we discussing all three?
Because I made the motion for option three, which is the option that is recommended by the administration.
Could, Mr. Amusso, could you please remind us any reasons that a Board member might recuse oneself from a vote? Could you also specifically deal with Pascal versus the Pennsylvania Supreme Court case, Pascal versus the zoning board of Pittsburgh? All right, so you only abstain for a vote if you have a pecuniary interest, which is defined as you're going to make some money, either you or a member of your family. Is there a concern about that? Well, didn't the case discuss personal interests? I can look. I mean, I'm not familiar with the case you're citing right now. You're saying that if somebody has a personal interest, what is it? What do you? I'm not saying that. I'm asking you, as our Solicitor, to remind the Board for some reasons for this in citing a specific Pennsylvania Supreme Court case. Does anybody have a pecuniary interest? It was also personal interest, I believe. Okay, well, if you want, I can review this case. Is there somebody in particular you're concerned about? No, I just, your role as Solicitor is to help ensure that this district and the Board members are protected.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Why are we having the three options then? We are giving the three options.
No.[541.38]
The reason we had a discussion was because you raised it and I wanted to get a good answer for your question, so thank you. Yes, Mr. Hickey?
Yeah, like I said, I have a question. I know we talked about this and we had some discussion at the meeting itself on how we're going to present this option, of which even at the end of that meeting, I said, I'm still confused on how we're doing this. Generally, when we are presented with three options, we discuss the three options and then we eliminate one and then we have two, and then we vote on that option. We've had situations in the past where there's three choices, and that's how it operated. But basically, you're taking those choices out of our hands by jumping right to option three, too, not even option one or option two. Like, we went right to option three, and you obviously got, you know, being the board president, got to jump in right away with the option that you most likely prefer. Whereas I thought we would have discussions on all three options, we would go around a room, even if you didn't have any thing to say, just say, okay, I prefer option one, or I prefer option two, and then we tally those votes, and then one is eliminated, and then we can vote on the other two. That was my impression of how this was going to work, but obviously, I am incorrect.
Ms. Stone, and then Mr. Hidalgo.
I still think we, regardless of which motion is made first, we still are in a position to have the open discussion right now, which is what we should do.
Mr. Hidalgo.
Thank you. So I'll just start with some questions before I comment. So the grant, federal grant money that we had possibly applying for and is kind of on hold, just because we make this decision to start architectural work doesn't mean that that still could materialize. Is that true?
Yeah, correct. Tony, would you just give an update on the grants, the federal grants we applied for, where we are, what we learned?
Yes, we applied for appropriations, for appropriations from the U.S. Congress for this project. I was told by the person I was dealing with, Congressman Fitzpatrick's office, that it doesn't seem likely that we were going to receive any funding from that. It was tied up with the shutdown and with the budget discussions, and that even the discussions that they were having would not have included this project as being awarded to the district. Obviously, they did come to a budget recently. I have not, I don't know what's in that budget yet, but I have not heard anything from Congressman Fitzpatrick's office. So I believe that, I mean, I can check with him, but I don't know that anything's going to be happening, anything's going to happen with that. I would say that we will have the opportunity to do apply for this next year when the budget is occurring, or we can at least talk to Congressman Fitzpatrick's office about that.
The only thing I would add to that, Kevin, the man we spoke with and been in contact from the congressman's office, said that he would keep us close to it if anything were the change in the near future, even though he gave us a dim outlook for, you know, this year.
Okay, thank you. So even though, you know, because this wasn't really a budget, this was more like an appropriations bill, so they'll keep working on it. And I think we should all maybe put a petition together to our federal colleagues to ask for that money very, and put in a good reason and all the reasons why, which kind of piggybacks one of the reasons why, that I'd ask about now, is our architect friends over there, sorry, I don't remember your name right now, I apologize, but he did make a good comment that, you know, it's not registered as a historic building, this building, but we should treat it as such, which, so I think that's where we're kind of stuck in between a rock and a hard place. So I'd like to understand, if it was registered as a historical building, would we be entitled to more funding or anything like, any advent, anything, does anybody know?
So I'm not an expert in historical funding. I do know that if it were a historic building, we would have, we would have a better, and please, if I'm wrong about this, we would have a better shot at receiving funds, but from what I understand, the makeup of the building, because as we learned at last, at the Facilities Committee meeting, this is actually five separate buildings constructed at various points in time, that this would not be able to be classified as a historic building.
Well, I think we should advocate to change that rule, number one, and I'll keep moving on with my questions, if you don't mind. This is a big, this is a big building, so, and a big to-do, and it is a community center. I think we will fix the building. The future of it seems to, the future of the use has kind of also been completely tied into this without explicitly a conversation that I would have liked to have had, because, you know, we talked originally, and I proposed that we do a comprehensive plan, and Mr. Tate was very accommodating in having the architects put together a comprehensive plan. It was a big thing to do, a big, you know, project to undertake, and I think we only brushed on it, to be honest with you, because it's that big. And I think they did a good first crack at it, but what we fell back on is the maintenance manual, and we just basically followed the same, we came back just to the maintenance manual, and we're just going to fix the buildings that are next on the list, keeping the administration here. So I don't know if there's a better, you know, choice than keeping the administration here, that's separate than fixing Chancellor Center. I think this building will be fixed, no matter what. The school district will do that. If we can get federal funding, it will make it even easier. But not just are we fixing this building, but we're investing maybe another 12, 13, 14 million dollars, I don't know, I'm just guessing on numbers, to have the administration here, maybe, hopefully, for the next 20 years. And that's not a bad price tag, to be honest with you, after, I think that's why you're recommending it, because the administration is recommending it, that they can, they're happy with, you know, moving forward with a full renovation, which will make it not completely, like, we're not going to change things, but we're going to make it so the administration can stay here in a safe way. And really, the basement is my biggest concern. So understood, I think from a dollar standpoint, it's probably, it's, even though it seems like a lot of money, if we go build a, let's say, with the Richborough Middle School and renovate that, it's going to cost more to make the administration there, even though you could do things a little bit different, more space, less rules probably, to do what you want to do, to make something that might be longer lasting than 20 years. So I actually look at this as a temporary fix, even if it's 20 years. It's, I'm not sure we'll be able to, we're going to see. So all I'm trying to get at is, there's a lot of questions. I don't think we fully vetted the comprehensive plan on what other options. I think Mr. Hickey spoke about purchasing a building that's, might be, you know, that there are commercial buildings that we could do, and how much would it cost to modify that, that possibly, and staying in Newtown could possibly be a good option that we haven't really explored publicly, at least. But understand, the Chancellor Center's been on this for 10 years. We've been on this for 10 years, trying to see what, at least fix the basement, and now we've basically just coupled the administration staying in the building. So I see this as a temporary thing. If we get 20 years out of it, that'll be great. And the only last comment that I'll make is, I worry about, you know, I would have liked to have seen the geotechnical survey done first, digging in and see what we're looking at from the soil standpoint, and some samples of what the, what we're going to get into, but I think as we discussed last week, if during this process of design and investigation, we find that there's a bigger price tag, we should definitely come back to the drawing board and start discussing it, you know. So this isn't a vote to complete the full renovation, but to do some architectural work, so there's still, but I think we're, it's not, it's not the worst option in the world, because I think the building works the way that it is, which is what I wanted to ask the administration. If we were, this is my only last question, it's my last question. If we were to just do what we were going to do, and we're recommended to fix the drainage in the, around, you know, dig out around the buildings, and not do the full renovation, would the administration still be able to work in the conditions that the building is now, if we just worked on the basement? I guess I would ask the administration that.
So, I mean, the short answer to that is yes. I would, I would say that I don't think it would be, besides the water issue, I think the HVAC issue is a now problem. Replacing the HVAC while the building, while the foundation issues are being worked on is the smartest move for that, because of areas such as under the steps in the front being open, so that we could, so that equipment, new equipment, old equipment could be taken out, and new equipment could be brought in. But, I mean, could we stay in the building without doing all that? Yes. But I'd like to get into what the administration recommendation means, and the situation that we, in which we're making that recommendation. And we were asked by the board to investigate different solutions to locate locating the administration, including renting a building, buying a building, renovating Richborough Middle or another building. We talked about building a new Wrightstown and moving in there. We talked about buying a building and equipping that. And we brought those options, and I think we saw that, for the most part, all those options were more expensive than renovating this building. So in June, we were asked to go out to RFP for an architect and a construction manager for this building under all three options. We did that. We found a construction manager in Boyle that we're very happy with, and an architect in Marotta Main that we're also very happy with. They've done an excellent job in working with us, and we, you, and, you know, we went through an arduous process to select those two contractors, and we're very, very proud of our selection. We met in October, and we were advised by the board to have them evaluate this building and make a decision, make a recommendation as to what option is the best. We brought, we worked with them, facilitated their observations. We did not influence their observations, and their expertise showed, for all the reasons that were articulated at the Facilities Committee meeting, that option three was the best option. We're making our recommendation on, we're not making a recommendation as far as whether or not we stay in Chancellor Center. That is a board decision, and we, but we do feel, based on our experts' opinion, that of the three options, option three is best. And I say that because of the various reasons that they gave. We're looking at shutting down the building, noise, and, you know, being a good neighbor, the noise and the traffic that's going to be caused by any type of renovation, to only do that once. We're looking at costs, eventually, anything that we're talking about. We're not talking about a renovation here where we're going to tear up the building and tear everything out, and put in, you know, I believe the word that's been used is Taj Mahal. That's not what we're looking for. We're looking for the ability to do what's right one time, so that it doesn't have to be done for a long time, and that we're following the recommendation. We want to, we also look at construction costs. As the business manager, I have concerns that every year that we don't do something, the costs get higher to do other things. So if we get to the point where we have no more room in this building for administration, if the board wants us to stay in this building, if we have no room for administration, we're going to have to go out and do this again, and it's going to be a lot more expensive then than it would be now. And a point, another point that I'd like to bring, that I didn't mention at the last meeting, is this administration is extremely hesitant to want to spend money on an administration building. We want to spend, you know, students first always means something to everyone in this administration. We want to, we don't want to spend money on an administration building unless we have to, and we have to. But the thing is about that is, everybody feels in the community, and we feel as well, that we shouldn't be spending money on this type of thing, but we have to. And when we have to, let's do it right the first time, so that when, we can say, we don't have to think about spending money on administration building, other than upkeep and general maintenance for a long time. And that is the basis of our recommendation, you know, to get that problem out of, out of the way for the next 10 boards, or, you know, however many boards, you know, every two years, I guess, there could be a new board. So I'm just saying, for the administrators, the next three sets of administrators and superintendents that follow us, that that is not a concern, that is not a concern in the community, that it's taken care of once and for all for a long term.
Just follow up.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp.
May follow.
Yeah, I think what I heard one of the evaluators say in the presentation at the Facilities Committee meeting is, if we did option number three, we wouldn't have to touch this building for 20 years. And clarified, yeah, we might have to do a little painting here and there and so forth, but, but in terms of major renovations, you know, the expectation is option three, we're looking at a 20-year lifespan. Ms. Polly, you wanted to, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to follow up on what you were saying, because that was the, that was kind of the only thing. I mean, I appreciate the passion and everything, just like I have, and, you know, you did a lot of good work, you know. I want to talk to you, I'm not supposed to talk to you, I want to talk to you. Are you sure? So, by the way, I mean, you know, so you're, but to say that you're not making a recommendation of where the administration's going to go, if you're making a recommendation for option three, that is planting the administration here for the next, you know, 20 years. And I don't say that that's not the perfect option. I just, and you said you did look at some other things. We, I mean, we saw the lists, but again, we're going to determine in this process whether or not this is going to get more expensive or not, because there's a lot of question marks coming into this. And I really do feel like, at the end of the day, grand scheme of thing, even if it's $10 million, that's a lot of money, but we're going to be spending a heck of a lot more on capital improvements over the next 10, next decade. So I just think that I'm a little hesitant to commit the administration here. I'm not hesitant about fixing the building. So that's where I'm at. But again, I'll be okay with, you know, doing the architecture, even if it's one, two, or three, I don't care, we're going to do the architecture. I want to get down to the investigation as quick as possible, to see whether or not we have to pivot, and that's where I'll leave it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Polly.
Yeah, so first of all, as a lot of people from public comments said, we've been talking about that for like over a year, looking at different options, going through possibilities. But even when I joined this board, like four years ago, there was always discussion about the Chancellor Center, and I understand that even before, there were discussions, and nothing ever happened. And every year, the more we wait, the more and more expensive it is to fix things. And now we're at the point that you have to fix things. So we went out and we had an appraisal, and we found out that the value of the building is negative. So you cannot really do anything with this building, you have to fix it. We cannot abandon a building that is in the heart of Newtown, and it is a historic building for us and for Cancer Rock, and we, I mean, this was the first school, right? And we, I don't think we're, even if we wanted to abandon it, I don't think we're allowed to. So you have to at least keep code. So we looked at all the different options, and it sounds like, for me, option three gives, can make it an efficient workspace that can be utilized over the next, whatever, 20 years, and it's also going to be safe, because it's the only option that provides a sprinkler system. Would you like to work somewhere that, say you're in the basement, there is fire, and there is not like a sprinkler system? I mean, these are like the basic things that we can do. But again, this is the design and planning. So we are not going to impose that on the next board, that's my understanding. So we are just going to design and planning for all the possible options. And by the way, it's option three is not, does not provide any luxury. It's just like the basic renovations to make it an efficient workspace. And then, I think, if there is funding from the federal government or from somewhere else, or if the next board has different ideas, they can always look into that and vote and take some of these options out. Also, we renovate this using, we issue bonds, we do not raise taxes for that. And we have enough debt service available to cover that for the time being, according to our financial situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. Ms. Khan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tate. I just wanted, thank you, Mr. Rapp. I think that was excellent. I had a bunch of notes everywhere here, kind of taking us back to where we got to this evening to make this decision, which is, as Ms. Polly just stated, contractual agreement to have Marotta Main and Boyle Construction start their design process for the future of Chancellor Center. So back in 2024, when I co-chaired Facilities with Mr. Tate, we had discussed one of the first things endeavor to take on as a district, the district-wide facilities master planning. It's an ongoing process, it still continues. I know Mr. Roosevelt alluded to it at the last Facilities meeting, that we had stopped. We haven't. It was on hold while we were kind of going through a few things, as we are currently discussing at Chancellor Center this evening. When I joined the board in '23, and then in January at a board meeting, one of the first things I had to vote on at the time was the approval of the fixing of the elevator here at the Chancellor Center. It had been, I believe, out of service since 2022. So for over a period of a year to two years, there were no elevator use, and where administrative moved offices, moved entire departments without an elevator, also having individuals that were not able to climb stairs. So I know the history of the Chancellor Center goes all the way back, you know, when it was built in 1871, and through its multiple additions and changes throughout the decades. Part of that facilities master planning, district-wide facilities master planning, we also did the Cropper Study. I just, I guess for the audience and for our community members, wanting to know that this decision is obviously, it's a hard and challenging decision to make as a board member sitting here. You know, spending $18 million is not an easy, easy task. We've been wrestling and discussing and debating this topic for a year and a half. We've had, we have exhausted all of our options, as Mr. Rapp had stated, from the appraisals to buying, to selling, to renovating, to renting, to adding to an existing structure. We have, we have gone through a rigorous, thorough, deliberate, and diligent exploration of what the future of Chancellor Center will be. I feel at this point that we do have to make some sort of decision to move forward. As Mr. Rapp had already alluded to, that, you know, part of our district-wide facilities master planning, you know, we also went to RFP for, as you will see on the agenda, the future of Newtown Elementary School, in addition to Holland Middle School, and then there's, there's projects beyond that. So this is in the next couple of years. I also wanted to state that the remediation of the Chancellor Center, number one, the biggest issue being for safety, when part of the structural integrity and the water infiltration in the basement, which several of the board members had witnessed, you know, one of the things that sticks out to me the most, that Ms. Binda had mentioned a year and a half ago when we started this, is there's an entire wall in the basement or an area that houses all of our electrical, internet, cables, everything. There's water actually leaking through that basement surface of the wall, and it has been doing so for many, many years. There's walls that are crumbling in our, in our foundation and our structure. So we're talking about option one, just feel, just correcting and remediating those basic things of our foundation, water infiltration, structural integrity, integrity, and the safety. Option three allows us to renovate this building, so we have a future here for the district, a home for the district for the next two decades or more. When removing earth, soil, it makes sense to do other options, such as the HVAC, which is a completely custom situation here in this historic building, which is part of the reasons there's such a hefty price tag. And I remember four years ago, when the board was discussing it at the time, you know, there were board colleagues at the time, who were like, absolutely no, we will never spend that for HVAC on this building. So as a board member sitting here now, today, I just want to say that we really, truly have exhausted all options. We're here today to make a decision. There's no finalized decision, other than the fact that we're getting into a contractual agreement to move further and move ahead with the future of the Chancellor Center. Thank you.
Mr. Hickey.
A question before I have any comments, and I'll wait for later for that. I was under the impression from the meeting that the option that we pick is the road that we're going to go down. Like, if we choose, I believe the contractor had said, please correct me if I'm wrong, that when we make the decision to approve the construction management, that that's where they're going to go, starting next week. Like, there's not going to be a pivot to something else, unless something dramatic happens, as Mr. Hidalgo alludes to, which would, you know, make that cost $30 million instead of $20 million. So, I mean, I could say, yes, let's go for this, but I believe the option that we pick is the road we're going down. So if we go for option renovation, it says total budget, not to exceed, which is also a misnomer, $18,420, or am I mistaken? So if I do vote, then I could, you know, it could be the eight or nine million dollar option, as opposed to the other one. Am I mistaken in that assumption? Because if that's the case, why did we even have options here?
So the only options that you're approving tonight, the only spending that you're approving tonight, is the cost of the contractors to design the building. And again, we have, I believe it's $1.2 million and $600,000, is that correct, for, for option three? I don't have that number in front of me, but that's the only thing that you're approving tonight, is that. If, if for some reason, other options would be considered, I believe we would still have to pay them for what we agreed to, but that doesn't mean we're spending the $18 million on the, on the work that needs to get done. But again, but right now, all you're approving is hiring them to design the building at the option that you approve, at the option that is approved here. So you're only tying the board and the district into that cost for the construction manager and the architect to design the building. A board down the road can make a decision not to do that, but we would still have to pay them what we've promised them in this.
And that, that is my understanding as well. And the other example that we discussed at Facilities Committee, to Mr. Hidalgo's point, if the geotechnical came back and said, I think I even asked a question along these lines, if somehow the geotechnical, the ground survey disclosed a much worse drainage problem than was originally budgeted for, we would have to readjust. We wouldn't necessarily take that $18 million not to exceed and suddenly make it a $25 million project. We would look at the scope of the project We would look at the scope of the project and decide what adjustment needed to be made. Because tonight, we are not voting to spend $18 million, as Mr. Rap said. Tonight, we are voting to hire the architect and the construction manager to design the $18 million project. So yes, we're committing to option three if we vote in favor of it with the not to exceed of 18 million, but we are not we're not awarding construction contracts, for example.
Yes, so so the the process from here would be that they would design the building, they would meet with the various members of cabinet to discuss the areas that that they have in the building, what they need, talk about ways to improve the space so that it is more efficient for the people in this building and so that there is, you know, room for the future. From there, once the plans are finalized, then it would go out to bid, and that would be the point where the construction contracts would be approved, once those went out to bid and contractors, general contractors, for general contractors at least, which they explained last week, I can't go any further, I don't know enough, but that they would then that that would be when when that those dollar amounts would get approved.
Yeah.
And and again, I, you know, there would be a lot of prep 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 work before all of that happened to say, you know, where are we, you know, there's going to have to be work done in the building to say, you know, what are we looking at for the the water penetration? Obviously, we're not going to have 100% of an answer till you have a backhoe in the ground pulling the dirt away from the building. But I think I think that we're not we're not 100%. I mean, do I still think that's the best route? Yes. Am I saying we're 100% committed to that? No. And we might find that we have too many other costs to do that.
Ms. Stone.
I think part of it also is, we can't have, if we want them to plan and design for option one, and option two, and option three, they're different plan designs, and we would be paying triple cost. So we really are looking to look ahead and, okay, let them design for this more comprehensive plan design. Because if you are going to redo the floor, or let's say, move one wall, now you have to look at the heating also, it has to be adjusted. So, you know, your plan design for three takes into it takes into account many other items and as well as making the building more efficient. But we're also only paying then for one plan design. If we have to make a if we have to pivot, we will have to pay again for a different plan design. So we have to start somewhere, and, you know, we should move forward. You know, I'm I'm very skeptical about spending a whole lot of money and spending 18 million. But, you know, the piece of this that makes me lean in that direction is, we have to spend $8 million to fix this building, no matter what. So now, go out and find a building that would suit us and redesign it. What's that going to cost, plus the 8 million to put into this building? Are we going to rent a place and redesign that? Because that's tremendous amount of cost and design to do that and still put 8 million into this building. So add all of that, and I think unless something unless we have to pivot, I see the 18 million as a more reasonable cost going going forward in the most the most essential, you know, and we don't want to have to move people out of this building again. We can't, we know we can't rebuild. And if we do look for leasing or buying, we've looked into that. We can't go and buy a place up in Doylestown or down in Feasterville. So we have now a limited area that we're looking at either buying or leasing. And we've had realtors go out and look, and lo and behold, they came up with maybe one or two options. If you were buying a house and they said, you have two options to buy this house, do you want to feel, you know, will you buy that house? Are you going to wait until you find the right place? And that would leave us at waiting another year, another year. So I think at least this gets us moving in one direction. If we have to pivot, we pivot, but I see this is the most financially smart thing to do. And I'm pretty pragmatic about things, so, you know, I don't have a lot of emotion attached to anything, but I'd like us to get going as opposed to more Band-Aids and being put in a position where we're coming up with where we're not making not finding solutions. We just keep finding problems. And I think this is one way to get us moving forward in a positive direction.
Mr. Roosevelt.
Thank you. I just want to add a couple additional facts, both to this community, this district, and this board. Option one states abatement of the water issues, replacement of the HVAC system, and other minor work. Total budget not to exceed 8,690,000. Option two, all items in option one, plus renovations from the capital improvement plan. Total budget not to exceed $9,900,000. Option three, full renovation of the building, total budget not to exceed $18,420,000. Additionally, in the contract that we are about to approve, presumably the next item, C, under Article Six, Cost of Work, it does not indicate that it is not to exceed. Instead, it says, for the purpose of this agreement, the cost of the work shall be the total cost to the owner to construct all elements of the project designed or specified by the architect, and shall include the contractor's general conditions, costs, overhead, and profit. Additionally, this district did find a building that we could buy with substantially more square footage, substantially larger parking lot, for about $5 million. I expect that that building has probably been purchased at this point. There were a couple other buildings that were found for sale that were less than $7 million. Our master plan or capital improvement plan that this board asked for the conduction of, which may or may not be completed at this point, depending upon different people's opinions, listed about $400 million worth of work, including two high schools, two elementary schools, and a middle school. And yet, this is the first one that has been called into. Later on in the meeting, we have Newtown Elementary School and Holland Middle School additions and renovations also. But there are several projects that are not included in this. For me, I've I'll reiterate some comments that I've made before. I think this building has a rich history to this district, to this county, and to this country. And this beginning of this meeting, where we had a beautiful presentation of recent members, I think, connects us to all of the other servicemen and women that adorn these halls, that have fought, bled, and died for this country. I think that this is a beautiful building architecturally. It is historic. Whether it's on the historical registry or not is absent of my opinion at the moment. This building does need to be repaired. We do need to fix it, but we're not in the historical preservation business. I support options one and two, which resolve some of the major issues that have come up, which is the abatement of the water issues and the replacement of the HVAC. This contract could be amended to include sprinklers in either option one or option two. Option two is better because it also improves a lot of capital improvement plan budgets and is under $10 million. For another $8 million is option three. This doesn't include anything directly for the students, but that isn't a reason to kick the can further down the road. So I am in support of fixing this building, option one or option two. I have a hard time supporting option three with the understanding that we're probably at the limits of this building right now. We are about to outgrow this building. And if we're here for 20 more years, that doesn't mean that the administration needs to be also. And we do go out for bonds, and those bonds are paid back by taxes. So taxpayer money is going to this in a roundabout sort of way or direct way, depending upon how you want to focus this. So I I think that we should have voted for option one and option two to avoid further, I don't know, political media that circles around here. And I don't support option three. But the question that I've got, I guess, to these board members and the future board members that are in this room, is this what you really want to do? Thank you.
Mr. Hickey.
Since we made comments, I'll make mine then now. I thought, Mr. Roosevelt, your words were very well put, as far as it related to the history and what is actually going on. A couple things. Kept on hearing about how the all the experts are saying, you know, we got to go right to option three, option three. And no offense to the construction management or anybody else, but I think I would also recommend the most expensive option where there's probably the most profit as well. But as it relates to facilities here just in Council Rock, we've made mistakes before. Look at Wrightstown Elementary. Spent $17 million on a building that we still can't fit kids in, where the band still plays in the gym, where new new residents who come into this district can't go to their home schools, they have to go somewhere else because there's just not enough room. We built two middle schools the same exact size. As a matter of fact, we're voting on a construction management for one of them today to spend another $15 million. So we've made mistakes, even with the best intentions as it relates to our facilities. And I'm just afraid that we're going to be spending a lot of money making a possible mistake if we go with option three. Option one and option two allows option three to still happen in the future. Well, and it does allow for more work in a safe environment because it does handle the basement issues, and it will offer more space in that basement to work. I don't think anybody in our administration should have to work in that basement in the condition that it is now. Absolutely not. That's deplorable. But perhaps our biggest mistake that we made was probably 20 years ago, was moving this administration building into a schoolhouse. Square peg, round hole. I'm not sure any of the options that we decide tonight are actually going to fix this problem. So we might be still dealing with this problem with the square peg and a round hole, no matter how long this administration is here. This was a school building, not an administration building. To the neighbors, I give you all the credit in the world. You showed up at every meeting, you've made your points known, email after email. I give you a ton of credit for the great job that you did. And as your neighbor, we owe it to you to some degree to fix it. We've lived here for years. We do owe it to you. We've lived here, we have to fix what we've done over the past 10 years or so that we've been here. And like you said, even though this building is not historic, it's in a historic district, and it has a lot of great meaning to not to the Council Rock community. But say this is a house on your street, and we are all neighbors. Say your sidewalk needs repair, but you also need a new kitchen. You may not have enough money to do both. Sometimes you have to choose, knowing full well that if you wait on your kitchen in a few more years, it's going to cost a lot more money to get it done than it does now. But you might also have other repairs that need to be done. Sometimes you got to choose between what you want and what you need. So the question comes at some point in time, how are you going to get the money for that kitchen down the road? Well, maybe your neighbors could take a collection for you to help you to get it. Or maybe you have a rich uncle who will give it to you or leave it to you in a will. Or maybe you just can't justify doing both at the same time. You have to spend your money more wisely. We're no different than than a house in your neighborhood, just because we're a school district. Now apply those same principles to this district. How do we get the money for the things we want, not the things we need? I've suggested this before. Maybe the borough could do some fundraising. Because the renovation in this building has a direct impact on your community, both historically, aesthetically, and financially. That option will never go away. We also tried asking our rich uncle, Uncle Sam, for money. But you know what? He said he isn't as rich as we thought. You know, maybe in a couple of years, he'll be in a different position and he can give us some, but I wouldn't count on it. Or maybe we just can't justify doing both. We have to spend our money more wisely. As Mike said, we have massive repairs on the horizon. You'll hear about two of them tonight. One is Newtown Elementary. It's going to be a $44 million price tag. And one of the major reasons for this price tag is to give the school parity within the district to the other elementary schools. Which brings me to my final point. There's a community about two miles up the road, serves over 2,000 students and staff. It also serves an entire township. It's been waiting for parity for 25 years. It's called Council Rock South. You know, Council Rock South's the only public school in Bucks County without its own stadium. Stadium would do wonders for school spirit and the community at large. Could also hold events there. For example, we just had a meeting last month where Dr. Sanco had a reference having graduations at Council Rock North because of questions about Council Rock South. And yes, a stadium is on a future agenda here. But again, so is turf, and we all know how long that took to get turf. There are no guarantees. My concern is that that is when the board will decide, you know what, we just can't do it. By going with option one or option two, it leaves enough money for a stadium and is still under the budget for option number three, spending our dollars more wisely. And for all these reasons, I will support option one or two. Thank you.
Ms. Osseki.
As a district, we invest in our community. We value our history, and we appreciate the people who work in this district and in this building. We want them to be safe at work. We value our neighbors. We've heard from many. Mr. Hidalgo talked about even option three being temporary. And we know everything is temporary in a sense, but they don't build things like they used to. In 50 years, this building will be here. I think we all know that the more modern buildings that we bought will or built will be obsolete. We've experienced that. They don't build things like they used to. Option three achieves all of the goals set by the administration. It addresses the water infiltration concerns, it replaces the outdated mechanical systems, it keeps the building's historical integrity, it ensures minimal duration in a swing space, maintains fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers, it provides a good neighbor to the community, it creates a warm, safe, and dry place, and it increases the efficiency and utilization for staff to better serve the education of the students. It's the most cost-effective and financially responsible for the district. If we don't do it now, we'll have to do it later at a higher cost. I can't support moving our administration out of the building and not painting the walls and not refinishing the floors, because then they'll have to move out again, and that's an undue disruption. This is the best choice for the district and the community. It would have been cheaper to do all this work before prices of everything went up in 2020. It will be more expensive to do this work if we wait until 2030. As Mrs. Hill said, the time is now. We do it once, and we do it right. Mr. Hickey mentioned that we were trying to force a square peg into a round hole, and to some degree, I I agree with him. But the only choice that solves that square peg round hole problem is option three. So that's why I think we have to do this. We owe it to our district, we owe it to the people who work here, we owe it to our community. We do have other projects. We do have other projects. We have a lot of other projects, as you know from the capital plan. This plan leaves the most resources and the most options available for future projects. So I'll be supporting option three. Thank you.
Mr. Rapp.
I'd like to correct something I said earlier. The total amount of, the dollar amount that you would be approving tonight is actually only one, only, is, as compared to what I said before, is one million, two hundred and eleven thousand. That's seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred for the architect and four hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred for the construction manager.
That was close.
I was only off by six hundred thousand.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dago.
Yeah, thank you. I really like everybody's comments. I'm excited that, you know, we're going to get closer to fixing the building. Mr. Rapp, or Andy, if eighteen million point four, does that, that, and what we're approving tonight, the one point some million dollars, is that included in the total cost? Because it says here, design was about, design contingencies would be, or estimate would be around five, or is that additional five percent?
So the contingency, I believe is part of the cost. So if we didn't use the contingency, that would be a reduction of that eighteen point four million. And the cost that we're talking about that you're approving tonight, that would be part of this cost as well, so.
It's built into the.
Built into the, so, so, and just, just for the edification of the public, the, the actual cost of building, the building is thirteen million dollars, which is what the architect's fee is based on a percentage of that. And so we, uh, uh, that, so that would be part of that, and the, I'm sorry, we, we, that would, and anything that we don't spend would be a reduction of that. And I, I also, you know, want to, want to say that, you know, we, we try very hard in administration to spend as little as possible, and, you know, we, we will, through all phases of this, obviously administration's going to be very involved. We have a very good person working for us, and Jess, who knows what she's doing with, with this type of, of work. She did it for, I believe, in the Philadelphia School District. And, you know, we'll be watching to make sure that costs are down, and, and to keep the costs down. You know, our goal is to come in, should, should this project be approved, to come in under eighteen million, to come in under that number when, when all is said and done.
So just to clarify, these costs we're approving today are probably in the soft costs?
Yes, and that's what I was, was blanking.
Okay, thank you.
That additional cost is, are the soft costs, permit fees.
Architecture fees are what we're doing today.
This is, yes, this is part of the soft cost.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? You know, one of the interesting things about serving on the board is that anyone who was tuning in tonight to this discussion might think, my goodness, they're talking about spending eighteen million dollars and they've, you know, really not explained why and, and what their considerations are and so forth. But as was alluded to earlier, and as was mentioned, we've been discussing this for well over a year as an active project. And the chance, the challenge of Chancellor Center goes back many years. And I, I don't want to keep doing this history thing, but, you know, not long after I joined the board, we were discussing the, the challenge of Chancellor Center, and I suggested, why don't we get it appraised and see what we could sell the building for? And I was thinking, boy, if we could sell the building for six million dollars, we could probably use that to build a new administrative center and so forth and so on. What we find out is, six years ago or whenever, that really the building has no value in the market as is, because of, of the condition of the foundation and so forth. And so when we started the conversation again a couple of years ago, we went out and got another appraisal, I think that was about a year and a half ago. And, and as, as Ms. Polly said, you know, essentially it's a negative value because of the work that needs to be done. So we can't sell this building, we can't walk away, we have to renovate it. And I think that, the, the option three that we're looking at is the most cost-effective and smartest thing to do, and, and our independent appraisal verified that. And I just want to clarify the point about sprinklers. We hadn't really discussed that previously, but that came up last week. We asked the question, oh, are sprinklers part of the project? And yes, sprinkler system is in option three. It is not in option number one or option number two, and I can't see renovating this building and not putting a sprinkler system in. That would be unconscionable, in my opinion. So we have, and I think I should reread the motion since we've had such a long conversation. We have option three on the table, and if the board votes on this motion and it fails, then we will look at option two and option one. And to repeat the motion that has been made and seconded, I move to approve design and planning for option three, full renovation of the building, for the Chancellor Center renovation.
Second.
Are you did already?
Yeah, we had it seconded, thank you. So we'll have a roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Tate.
Yes.
Mr. Hidalgo.
Yes.
Mr. Roosevelt.
No.
Mr. Hickey.
No.
Ms. Polly.
Yes.
Ms. Osaki.
Yes.
Ms. Khan.
Yes.
Ms. Stone.
Yes.
Ms. Horner.
Yes.
So that's seven yes and two no.
Thank you. The next motion is item C. I move to approve the agreement with Murata Main for the Chancellor Center renovations, architectural design services, subject to solicitors' review and audit. For option three. That is for option three. Thank you, Mr. Muso. I'll reread it. I move to approve the agreement with Murata Main for the Chancellor Center renovations, architectural design services, option number three, subject to solicitors' review and audit.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Objections? Mr. Roosevelt.
I'll just reiterate, if this is not to exceed, please make it clear whether it's not to exceed for the contractor and the construction manager, or if it's not to exceed for the entire project budget. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rapp, you know, I mean, this was not to exceed for the whole project.
I was not to exceed for the.
These options have specific costs, right?
Yeah, these options have specific costs. This, this cost is based on a percentage of the total cost of construction, not soft cost. So construction only. Then the not to exceed was related to the budgets for the three options. This is related to actual cost, there will be actual costs depending on the.
You're on the spot. Do we know what the actual cost of option three, the RFP response that we're approving now?
The actual cost for this contract is seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred dollars at thirteen, at a thirteen million dollar budget, which is the construction cost part portion of the budget of eighteen point four million dollars.
Seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, you said?
Yes.
All right, Madam Secretary, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Tate.
Yes.
Mr. Hidalgo.
Yes.
Mr. Roosevelt.
Yes.
Mr. Hickey.
Yes.
Ms. Polly.
Yes.
Ms. Osaki.
Yes.
Ms. Khan.
Yes.
Ms. Stone.
Yes.
Ms. Horner.
Thank you. Item D. I move to approve the agreement with Boyle Construction for the Chancellor Center renovations, construction management design services, option three, subject to solicitors' review and audit.
Mr. Rapp, what's the total for this contract?
The total for this contract is four hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. I would say that there is additional cost should the project take longer than, than it is projected of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred per month.
I think we need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, concerns? No concerns? Madam Secretary, please record, this motion is passing unanimously. We move on to approval of Newtown Elementary School additions and renovations. And I'll make the motion. I move to approve the agreements with Schrader Group for the Newtown Elementary School additions and renovations, and Holland Middle School additions and cafeteria expansion architectural design services, in the amount of one million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred dollars, and three hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars, respectively, subject to solicitors' review and audit. Ms. Stone, thank you. Comments? Ms. Osaki.
I'm going to ask Dr. Senko, if you don't mind, to just explain kind of a quick overview of the renovations and additions, particularly as we talk about additions at Newtown Elementary, and, and what exactly are we adding there, but also at Holland. Thank you.
So Newtown Elementary, no additions with regard to that renovation project? Go ahead, Tony, let me out here.
There, there is a small addition to the lobby area to expand that.
Thank you. But basically, I'll use a phrase, I'll borrow a phrase I've heard used before. Basically, it'd be like we would take the building, turn it upside down, dump everything out of it, and we would take care of all of the systems in that building, and we have made some headway already in that building. Jess, I know you're helping us from the back of the room. We've made some adjustments to that building already for the chillers. Am I correct in that? And that would be Newtown Elementary. So new windows, new doors.
I, I did miss, I was reminded by Jess, there is also an addition for the, small additions for the kitchen and the boiler room, which has to do with the chiller.
I should have let Jess answer the question from the beginning. Thank you. Jess, is there anything else we're missing on that? If there is, can you come up and help us? Okay. So there are a couple of small additions, but it is not like some of the other projects where we have added on classrooms and, and the like. Holland Middle School is a little bit different. That is an expansion of the cafeteria. If anybody has been in Holland Middle School, the cafeteria is kind of a sunken in the middle of the building, and then there are steps or, or standards on two sides of the, of the cafeteria. And so we need more space for the number of students that are projected there, and we're talking about a six-room addition at Holland Middle School. And Tony and Jess, have I missed anything on that? Thank you.
Mr. Hickey.
The numbers aren't here, but could you give us the numbers for what both of these projects are expected to cost at Holland Middle and Newtown Elementary?
Give me a minute to bring them up.
Can I ask another question while he's bringing it up?
Please.
I'm not sure who would answer this question, but I know it's not Mr. Rapp. The projected enrollment at Holland Middle School, can you tell me what that is as compared to the enrollment when the school was initially opened? And where that projection is supposed to be going?
I can't give you exact numbers, Mr. Hickey, without doing the same thing, pulling that up. But based on the demographic study, we're expecting several dozen, up to about ninety-six or more students going to Holland Middle School in the coming years. And Jess, I'm going to put you on the spot in the back. Do you know off top of your head when we're expected to see that increase at Holland I'm sorry? Within the next five years? I can get you those, those numbers, Mr. Hickey, I just don't have them in front of me.
Yeah, and then, like I said, the question I would like to see is if that number exceeds the number when the middle school was initially opened? Thank you.
I have the numbers that you asked for. The renovation, the renovation of the Newtown Elementary School, the construction costs are thirty-three million, six hundred and sixty-five, and the soft costs are ten million, ninety-nine thousand, six hundred, based on inflation, depending on how long it takes, it, it could be as much as forty-seven, forty-seven million, seven hundred and ten thousand. Holland Middle work is nine thousand, four hundred, nine thousand, nine million, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in hard construction costs, two million, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand in soft costs. With inflation, it could be as much as thirteen million, seven hundred thousand.
Thank you. Other questions? Yeah, Mr. Roosevelt.
Thank you. Things change, and I just want to confirm, in our facilities meeting, regard to Holland, there was a classroom addition. I believe it was six classrooms. But when I'm looking at Article Three of the contract in front of us, scope of, scope of work, it seems specific and exclusive to the construction manager's basic services of scope. It does not indicate the scope of construction work. I understand that in some cases, these documents are referring back to RFPs. My recommendation would be to actually have the scope of work defined in the AIA contract document, as opposed to connecting it to an RFP, which makes it a little bit more challenging to defend and/or bring up, should that occur. Hopefully it doesn't. So I just wanted to confirm that what we are voting on here is consistent with the facilities committee meeting that we've previously held last week, which includes an addition to the cafeteria, I believe the lobby, and I believe maybe six extra classrooms or some classroom addition.
It is six, six additional classrooms. And so, so the, this, this contract is subject to solicitor review and approval. This contract has not been finalized. Obviously, the, the numbers are still going to be the same, but we will have Mr. Muso review this contract and, and fix those issues, including having the proper scope in the contract.
I, I also believe we've, we're hiring Schrader as the architect. I'm expecting there to be a companion document for Schrader that we don't seem to have before us. And I also see later in this document, there are several items that are listed as not included at this time, or not applicable. So I recognize, and I can plainly see on this, there is draft across it, as I'm familiar with seeing. So I recognize this is a draft, and I understand it's subject to solicitor review.
This, this is the Schrader Group approval document that you're being asked to approve right now?
Under scope of work, it's just talking about construction manager and their duties.
Okay, like, like I said, this was, we, we put this, we, we, we know that it, it's not final and it needs to be revised, so those revisions will take place.
Yeah, we're voting on it. Thank you.
Okay, are there other comments or questions? Are there any objections? Mr. Hickey.
Just a quick question. So if we move to approve this, we're just approving the architectural design and construction management, not necessarily the entire forty-four or thirteen million dollars?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's the same, same process.
Okay. Hearing no objections, Madam Secretary, please record, this motion is passing unanimously. Takes us to item F. I move to approve the agreements with Boyle Construction for the Newtown Elementary School additions and renovations, and Holland Middle. additions and renovations, and Holland Middle School additions and cafeteria expansion construction management services, in the amounts of 857,615 and 513,450, respectively, subject to solicitors' review and audit.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. Are there questions, comments? Mr. Roosevelt.
Just the same ones that I've mentioned. Can we please confirm that this, the Holland Middle School is including classrooms as well?
We'll make sure that's in, we'll make sure that's in the contract, that, that's in there. It is, it is, includes, I mean, it, it's based on the RFP. I know, I know you want it to say six, you know, the scope to be more in detail, so we'll, we'll have that done. But it, it is, these costs include a sixth classroom addition.
Okay, so the, the dollar amounts will not change on the motion that we're considering, it's just more specificity on the details are going to be added.
Yes.
Very good. Are there other comments or questions? Are there any objections? Since there are no objections, this one's passing unanimously, please. I believe that covers all of the motions for facilities committee, which takes us to finance committee.
That's me. Hang on just a second, let me find my notes here.
No rush, we're all catching our breath.
So the finance committee met last Thursday? I don't know where my notes are, I apologize. Oh, thank you, you found them. Callie's the best. Okay. All right, the finance committee met on November 6th. We had just one item to review. We went over our first quarter operations as compared to budget. There were some nuances related to the state budget and new software that this is the first year using, but generally, we're in very good shape, and I thank Mr. Rapp for, for reviewing this. This was a request of the board to review how exactly we're tracking, and now with this new software, we can, we can see that better. I imagine that if we were to have that meeting today with the state budget passed, the, the numbers would be different, but it is what it is. So, no, okay. I appreciate it. And we have just one, one item. I move to approve consent agenda items B through G as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second. Questions, comments? Any concerns? Objections? None? Very good. Passing unanimously. Please record as such, Madam Secretary. That covers finance committee, which takes us to public comment. This session of public comment is open to anything that folks want to discuss, agenda or non-agenda. Again, let me repeat, this is an opportunity for the members of the public to address the board. We ask that you keep your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience or watching this broadcast live on TV. I hope not. It's our goal to maintain a respectful environment so that members of this community have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue, we may not, and we do not typically respond to comments or questions. I have no one signed up. Does anybody wish to speak? Sir, just come forward if you would, identify yourself and tell us what township you live in.
Joshua Morris, Northampton. I'm a junior at Council Rock South, and I'm a Level 200 at MBIT, and a Skills USA representative there as well. I just wanted to thank Yoda and Bob for their leadership. Throughout board history, we had many amazing board members like Wendy Thomas, Kristen Marcel, Ed Solomon, Mary Ann McKee, and the list goes on. I am here to thank one board member in particular for all he has done for our district throughout the four years, especially for our students. His name is Bob Hickey. Bob Hickey is not only a board member, he writes to Council Rock, but he is the board president at MBIT as well. Bob Hickey brought homecoming to the table and got us our own dance at Council Rock South so we could call our school home. The past two years that dance has came back, the past two years that it happened, they have both been amazing, and us students really enjoyed it. He also advocated for a stadium to be built at South, which would be great for students entering, so we can finally have our own games and our own events at our own school. So I hope that plan is still being talked about. For our seniors, he voted yes to tax rebates, and he fought to keep the adults' taxes low, because I can't pay taxes. I figured I would point out a benefit for the adults. Bob, thank you for all you have done. Region Three and our whole district lost an amazing human being. You were an A-plus board member. To Yoda Polly, I really thank you for volunteering your time and stepping up and doing what you thought was right for us students and those adults who are taxpayers. While I disagree with some of the things you said, I wish you the best of luck on your next journey. Thank you.
Those are awfully nice comments. Thank you very much. Anyone else? No. All right, that'll do public comment. Takes us to board comment, new business. Is there new business, is there old business? Seeing none, hearing none, we will, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to take a second also and thank Ms. Pally and Mr. Hickey. I think you'll both be, be missed, so thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to kind of echo our public comment, as well as Ms. Osaki, that it takes a lot of time and effort to campaign, and then it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort to be an effective board director. It is truly a public calling when we serve with the best intentions, which is for the betterment of our school and every one of our 10,500 students. I want to thank the candidates that ran for school board, and I want to congratulate those who are elected to serve the next four years. With that, I would like to thank Ms. Polly for her commitment, dedication, advocacy, and hard work for our students in Council Rock District the past four years. We met when we first ran for this office in 21. It's been an honor getting to know you the past four years, and I'm proud of the work we have accomplished in the past two years, serving as board colleagues. Thank you for your support, your guidance, your mentorship, and, and your friendship. I remember you were the first director I had heard speak publicly in support of Full Day Kindergarten back in 2021, sitting up here on this dais. Please know that you're leaving behind a legacy in helping bring Full Day Kindergarten to our district, something that will affect future generations of Council Rock students and our community for the better. So I personally thank you, and I hope you enjoy your extra time with your family and friends, and it was also a privilege to co-chair Education Committee with you this year. And I'd also like to thank my board colleague, Mr. Bob Hickey, for your four years on the Council Rock School Board. I may go as far to say you're probably one of the happiest board directors I have met. I can distinctly every time recall you heading into a committee meeting with your whistling, or running into you in the parking lot with music blaring in your car. What was in many cases, long hours of meetings ahead, your, you know, your attitude and happiness was always a welcome addition. I do appreciate that you're always respectful and courteous as a fellow board colleague, no matter the disagreement, or heated discussion, or outcome of a vote. I wish you the best and hope you enjoy your time with your family as well, and thank you for your years serving as our MBIT liaison. Thank you. Thank you both.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Good luck. Jim. Cheryl. All right. All right. Thank you.